All right, I'm calling the Village Across Plains Board of Trustees Meeting of October sixth, twenty twenty five to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Branton?
Here.
Trustee Brochus?
Here.
Trustee Porker?
Here.
Trustee Porcland?
Here.
Trustee Pamukowski? Trustee Kettlebeater?
Here.
President Langfels?
Here. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that's not duly noticed on the agenda. All right.
Right, I have Becky.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And Becky Ward, live at twenty-two oh two Woodside Drive. I'm here to express my support for the approval of the construction of the new village hall police station. The state of our current building is not merely embarrassing. It poses unacceptable risks to staff health, personal safety, and essential confidentiality of village operations. The current building is failing the staff and the public. Our current facility offers zero security. There are no safety protocols in place, no secure points, and critically, no place for staff to retreat should a threatening situation arise. An individual enters the building with malicious intent, we are entirely exposed. I often feel that my entire personal safety protocol is like whether or not I would have time to grab my stapler and throw it. There is no concept of confidentiality in this building. We can hear conversations in the lobby of the police department, which is unacceptable if they are victims of a crime. There are no barriers to stop individuals from walking directly to my desk, often while I'm working on confidential court items. We lack basic security cameras and panic options that are standard in modern municipal buildings. This project is not just about convenience. It is a critical health necessity. Some of you may not know, but I have multiple sclerosis. While I currently maintain strong mobility, I must plan for a future where I may require the use of a wheelchair or other mobility aid. The current building is noncompliant with ADA and cannot safely accommodate staff or residents who rely on mobility aids. The structural failures of the current building are accelerating. During the last significant rainfall, we experienced conditions that went far beyond typical wear and tear. The sump pump ran constantly and a stream of water from the skylight leaked directly over some of our office equipment. There is also a sewer smell that comes up from the drain in the basement if it's not flushed. These constant water issues contribute directly to the potential for mold and other environmental damage to staff. Every year we wait, the costs associated with construction materials and labor will rise. Things will not be getting cheaper. Investing now is the most prudent long-term strategy to ensure the village has a serviceable facility for decades to come. I want to acknowledge the immense time and effort that has gone into the planning phase to ensure this design is responsible and efficient. Hours and hours have been spent refining the plans to ensure that every square foot serves a critical purpose. This is a functional facility built to meet the core operational and safety requirements of our village. We did not make it the Taj Mahal. This new building is not a wish list item. It is a necessity driven by safety, health, regulatory compliance, and structural integrity. I strongly urge the village board to approve the funding and move forward with the construction of the new village hall police station without further delay.
Thanks Becky. And next I have Tim Heneman. Could you also state your address too when you get up to the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
Jim Heneman, forty-eight, six, five hundred, Gordon. I don't know if this is a discussion on the EMS, was it was, or is this still a playground?
You can comment on anything that's on, anything you want to.
Okay. I was hoping that this situation with the EMS was handled after the last meeting at the firehouse and all the the negative aspects that were brought up of people trying to stop this or break up the EMS was was listened to. There's no reason to break it off. It's a, it's a happy organization. It's a working organization. I'm sure that we still need it. It's still desired. I know that Jay launched to get rid of it. I'm hoping that's wrong and I'm hoping that the rest of the board can, can find it to go against it, you know, and keep the organization here and work. Other than that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online wishing to make a public comment? Please raise your hand. I don't see anyone.
We'll take you up.
We will go to general business then. Number one, discuss, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of a playground for Scenic Valley Park. Mike?
Good evening. As we started the conceptual planning for the development of playground in the power of Scenic Valley, we were more or less approached about a playground that they were looking to get in the ground and good pictures up to put in their calendar or their catalog for the twenty twenty-six season. In front of you are pictures of what that playground would look like. We did have, we did have a meeting with the community or with the neighbors out in that area and received pretty much no objections to playground products that's being presented. The cost is forty thousand dollars currently for us and that is installed. That also includes fiber and timber surrounding outside. And this I would call as phase one of the playground project for this, this neighborhood. The money would come out of the playground improvement fees from senior crowds, so directly from neighbors that, you know, we've talked about this. And in general, we feel it fits really well in this location. We have, we have a barn, we have a silo, we have these things pretty much in the background as well, right behind it. And everybody seems to be pretty happy with the start.
All right, do I have a motion? Motion to approve the purchase of playground for Scenic Valley Park?
I'll second this.
All right, I have a motion and second discussion. Go ahead, Cameron.
What are the total park impact fees for that?
What we currently have or that we will have? So.
Both.
Yeah.
So these two numbers, there was the current budget number?
Yeah, so overall budget's one fifty-one. We currently have eighty-four, one-third of that.
Yeah, okay.
We'll be looking at, we decided minimum to be including roughly forty-four, forty-five thousand in extra years. Our budget is wrong to expand the playground in this area. And if we have more funds within that and the neighborhood decides, and we go through the conceptual plan of it all, we should bring that back and let you know.
Do you have an idea of how much we're saving by us being there?
Yeah, I asked them for a number because I thought I might need that. It's hard for them to really decide that, but installation with this type of playground, we're at least saving forty to fifty thousand dollars right now.
You can always look at the catalog to what.
It'll even have the military costumes and so people will be able to come on with them.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Good job. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All's the same. So moved. All right, number two. Discussion and possible action regarding extending the withdrawal deadline at the EMS district agreement from December first, twenty twenty-five to July first of twenty twenty-six. We talked about this at the last meeting, what that, which you see there is the document that was sent to all the towns. I just think it's appropriate for us to be, you know, passing it right away. So, you know, they can say, we're setting the example that we're willing to extend the deadline. There's really not much to that, but it needs to happen according to our village attorney.
And all the towns basically are going to have the same.
Yes, it's been sent to all the towns with a request to put it on their October board meetings.
Okay, and what happens if one of them does not pass it?
Well, we'll be talking about that at our meeting in October twenty-seventh, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for the EMS.
And this is Michael. I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same? So moved. All right, number three. Discussion and possible action to approve the award of the contract for the new seventeen thousand five hundred square foot village hall police station, including all site work. All right, we want to start with a motion, then go into discussion, or would you like to have a discussion first?
I have a question. So I don't care the discussion. I think do we first have to decide if we want to do like with the, a lot of them had the alternate one to add to it? So if we're going to do that, okay, so like the first, the first bit that they're recommending isn't the cheapest if we are doing the alternate one to add to it. So we'd have to decide if we're doing that. Does that make sense?
No, it is. It was included in that.
Yeah, that's including the alternate. That's the cheapest with the alternate.
With that bike pad.
The alternate wasn't necessarily the cheapest with that, but the total was still the cheapest. Because I know that too, but it's still.
When I handed it up, okay, when I handed it up, it wasn't. Okay, let me look. We thought Daniels was cheaper or ideal was cheaper.
Ideal was eighty-three thousand dollars less. So here you go. You look at the chart. There were seven million eight thousand three hundred with sixteen thousand three hundred. So that's seven twenty-four. Ideal was seven thousand ninety, seven million ninety-eight thousand. And then they had nine thousand. So when you added that, that takes it to seven million one hundred and eight thousand or nine thousand.
And I bet I read that first as an oh oh eight rather than a oh ninety when I think I first read it. But, um, but I still would like to stay local. I feel like these guys are not local. Is there anything?
We, we talked about that. Problem is state statute says you have to go with low bid unless you can come up with very good reasons. And I asked, what are those good reasons? And it would be like if we had a bad experience with.
Or missed something critical.
They missed, they're sold, they've been sued. So we've done a background on them and they come up and they're out of West Salem. You're right, I, I'm with you on that, but we are, when it comes service, we could have done it with, because that doesn't have to tie. But construction is very clear in state statute. I, I certainly understand where you're coming from.
I was in the same boat.
Yeah, that's.
You just ruined my hopes and dreams again, Jay.
I'm sorry. I, trust me, I did ask God that.
Yeah, we did.
And, and wanted to look at that because again, we're very close and the, you know, I don't know if the construction will be the same, but clearly having the architects far away was definitely a con versus having one where you could just drive to their office. There's no doubt about that. So I certainly hear where you're coming from, but the problem is state statute is pretty clear.
And I know sometimes the people that are developing or doing things, projects, I should say, some of the contractors will donate back. Like, you know what, donate some things back. Have we asked any of these if they would have done that if we were to stay local?
Like what sorts of things?
Yeah.
Um, they'll donate like part of the, maybe the pad or something like that. They'll donate some things back.
I would have, I'm pretty sure with the number of people that put in, that everybody was going bare bones. I was literally shocked that Fendorf and Kramer Brothers actually put in, because
Kramer's huge.
Well, when they, when I did Midtown, they said that project was too small and it was twice the size of this one. So.
It's because of location to the.
You think here's closer than Madison? Now, I figure, I figured they want to keep crews busy and there's not as much work, so they lower the projects that they all go and on. Anything else?
Michael or Bill, do you guys have anything? Any questions?
Are we doing the discussion first?
Well, why don't we do a motion? There are some questions. So why don't we do a motion if someone would do a motion, then we can get right into discussion.
I'll make a motion. I got, I got, I'll make a motion to approve Brickell Brothers Inc. for the construction of the new village hall police station for seven million eight hundred or eight, seven million eight thousand three hundred dollars.
No.
I'll second.
Well, the total wasn't right there.
Yeah, well, why don't we just do this? That's correct for the, the concern. So we're good with that. And then we'll do another motion to see if we want alternate one and change.
Sure. Okay.
All right, does that make sense?
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion in the second. Go ahead with discussion.
Okay, I'll, I'll go. Uh, well, I've been on the fence a little bit about it just because it's seven million dollars and it's a lot of money and it works out to about five hundred thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years. And I'm assuming with the financing, we're taking that million off the top out of the general fund. Is that correct? Is that the plan?
Well, that, that was in my budget of six hundred and sixty thousand from the fund balance and then we get three hundred and forty thousand for this building. So that is a million bucks. So yes, that's what I would be recommending.
Right, okay. So, yeah, it's just, uh, it puts the village in a financial bind a little bit moving forward. I mean, sometimes we debate whether or not we want to spend an extra ten thousand dollars on a park. Yet we're willing to spend seven million dollars on a new village hall when alternatives haven't even been looked at. If anything can be done for, at a cheaper price tag.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you on the statement that nothing's been looked at. I think we have spent the last four years looking and working on this project. I think that's a long time and I'm not sure what you're referring to. We did look at a total of eight sites and narrowed it down to two and then it was voted on there. We've purchased the, the lot and then we went and hired a architect. And I'm guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out what you're referring to.
Well, during the entire time, we weren't ever really sure what this project was going to actually come out to cost. Which I understand the estimate was five and a half million and seemed comfortable with that and it's seven now and, yeah.
Well, here's, here's the deal. I, I can get us pretty close to five and a half million, you know, so here, here's what would be some math on that. We have, we can get it down a million with using fund balance in the sale of this building, right? We do have in there three hundred thousand or so for furnishings. We may, if we can't afford, we use the furniture, the furniture, some of the furniture we have right now, we could bring that down. There's about a three hundred thousand dollar contingency. We can make policy that we only spend that contingency on absolutes. So if we look at the track record of the architect and I agree with Becky, a lot of time has gone into looking at these pamphlet, these plans and everything, and I took them to experts outside of the architect that we hired. So I, I'm feeling somewhat comfortable that the building should not require a lot of change orders unless we are requesting it. The only thing that we cannot control is if they run into some problems on the site. And we did that at Midtown. It only turned out to be about five grand. The soil wasn't, in a couple spots, wasn't real good soil, so we had to dig it out and put new in. But we had like an eight hundred thousand dollar contingency and we only used about five thousand. So that can turn back into and so we may between those two items come up with another five hundred thousand. That gets us to five and a half million. And when that estimation that I made, that was back in twenty twenty-one. So you look at what has occurred with the pandemic, the supply lines and the tariffs and stuff. I think we're doing pretty darn good to stay fairly close to that number.
Sure, I understand, but it isn't the absolute number. I mean, it's been a lot, I mean, you're taking money from general fund and et cetera and other places. It isn't the absolute cost is what I'm saying. And I don't know if it was at the beginning or not.
Michael, I think that you're probably referencing like the, just a police station versus a police station village hall. And that's something I kind of wish we got to see, but I mean, looking at the almost million we spent in architecture fees, it probably doesn't make sense to spend that again to redo everything to maybe save that amount.
For two years, it could be nine and a half million.
Yeah. So that's kind of where I believe it.
Twenty-one, we'd probably repay five. So like the time that we're wasting pushing it forward is only costing more.
Right, it's, I, I, I think we hit probably the timing on the, I think there's a lot of supply for construction companies. I mean, you look at, we got eleven for the well, we only got one. How many did we get for the pavilion? I think it was three. And you look at that, that's a five hundred thousand dollars for the pavilion. Look what we're getting. You know, when you do a comparison, it's just extremely costly now. And I agree, I don't see costs going down. If we get lucky, you know, maybe the feds are going to lower the rates again. So we'll get a little bit better on interest.
Yeah.
And that certainly ends up playing a role in this. But Michael's absolutely right. This is, this is an expense.
I don't disagree with him wholeheartedly, but it's also excellent, a fifty-year building, right?
Oh, absolutely. And, and you're right, we went a little over what, you know, I was predicting. But we have growth built into that. There's nothing worse than building a building and then when it opens, you're already outgrown, have outgrown it, you know. So we do have some growth in that, in that building. And again, I think Becky mentioned it, if you read that twenty thirteen report, again, we spent tens of thousands of dollars on that. There's all kinds of problems with this building and their recommendation was to knock it down and start over. So, you know, you've got that also looking at it and it was, their prediction was three point nine and that was in twenty thirteen. And again, look what has changed since twenty thirteen, so. All right, Bill, your thoughts?
I, I'm good with it. I, you know, it's, it's a long-term project. I mean, it's something that we've needed to do for quite some time. And like you said, we've talked about this for, for four years and, and you know, the recommendation four years ago was to start planning for it, to start saving for it. It sounds like we have some money that we can pop in there. So I, I'm, I'm, I think this is the right thing to do. I think it's the right time to do it.
Okay. And I, and I also don't want to lose sight of what Becky talked about, some of the other things. You know, we always talk about recruitment and, and keeping retention, right? I mean, this is a difficult building. I, to be honest with you, when I'm looking for grants and bring people in, I always meet at the coffee shop or the.
I didn't see this place until my first day.
Yeah, yeah. I did not bring people here. I mean, it's, it's, it, it, it sends a message. That's what my feeling is. It sends a message. And if you want to hire good people, you should have good work environment. And safety is huge. There's shootings every day on the news and we really need to harden our buildings.
Right. I agree. And when you brought up though, the thinking like when we're talking about the furniture that we're going to use, I also think we need to take that into consideration too, that we don't want to have this beautiful new building and then put junky looking stuff inside. I mean, like is that, that was, you know.
That's not my, that's not my first choice, but what I'm saying is you can do that and function and then every year you slowly upgrade. You know, I, I'm with you all. We have it in here and doing it, but if the, the issue was getting down to that lower number, though, though are, there are things that are not necessarily must haves. You know, I'm with you on.
I agree, but I mean, I, as someone who has a lot of used materials in my own house, I also know that they look great. And then a week later, something happens and then you have like, when, you know, your back support, you know, things like.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you.
I just, I think when we're looking creatively, how we can say funny, I just think we do need to take into consideration that.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, fair enough.
I agree with her completely, but.
I'm just the numbers guy.
Jay said he likes these chairs.
I do. I, I like these chairs.
All right, we can keep the chair.
The table's down to go.
Well, like when we have the big, the hot button topics.
Yeah.
When you have to use a fire station or a Legion Hall to have a bit supportive.
And we have to use the library for voting. You're right. No, I'm, I'm all, those are all really reasons I believe this is a necessity. And we just have to do it the best we can. All right, anything else? Let's do a roll call, please.
Sure.
Can we run it again?
Can you review the motion?
Yeah, did you want to add the alternate bid or?
No, we'll do that a second motion.
Can you review it the motion?
I think it was actually to approve the award of a contract for the new village hall police station at seven million eight thousand three hundred dollars.
Right, so we'll vote on this and then we'll talk about the alternate.
Oh, so voting yes on this wouldn't necessarily mean we, we could also vote yes then.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Well, hold on, hold on for a second. So you said earlier that that sixteen thousand three sixty-five is already included in that seven million eight thousand three hundred, right?
No, it's in the seven million twenty-four thousand six seventy-five number that was on there.
Yeah, so these are added together, what I have on the screen.
All right, I got you.
Your, your motion was for just the base bid.
Right, yep, okay.
And roll call for just the base bid?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do trustee Branton?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Porker?
Yes.
Trustee Porcland?
Yes.
Trustee Pamukowski?
Yes.
Trustee Kettlebeater?
Yes.
And President Langfels?
Yes. So now we have the alternate, which is basically the part of the rest station. Though it's the concrete, the, the, the stuff there. The bathrooms are in the main bit. So this is to do that for sixteen thousand, when you look at it, I, I think that's a good deal that it's gone with.
You just voted James sixteen thousand? I'll make the motion to approve the alternate bid number one with the Brickell Brothers for sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five.
I'll second him.
All right, I have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, now.
It says, you're seeing it too.
Yeah, I go for it.
I'm the, I'm the she in sixteen three sixty-five. I'm there, it's sixteen three seventy-five.
Hmm.
I think you're.
Hey, Michael, can you clarify that? I saw Michael Klaas was on here.
I would guess at this point, there must just be a, a number missed. We can, we can look back at the alternates or at the.
Three sixty-five or?
Ten dollars.
There we can put it towards a furniture.
So we, we should be okay.
Okay, so we're going with the.
But my question is if we by law need to go by the cheapest one, and that is a different, that's different, and the cheaper one on that one would be Daniels.
No, you can't spoil it. The, the bid is together.
Yep.
And it's also, it's not cheaper though either because Daniels is. It's not cheaper though either, because Daniels is seven point, seven point one million.
No, no, she's talking about just the alternate.
Oh.
If you just brought, but they
Yeah.
What they do is they shift that around.
They're not gonna come out just for that, for that price.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Breton?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Borkart?
Yes.
Trustee Parkland?
Yes.
Trustee Pamukovsky?
Yes.
Trustee Kettlebeater?
Yes.
President Langfoss?
Yes. All right, it carries very good. Thank you all for coming tonight. I have a motion for adjournment.
So move.
We have a second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of both claim. So move. Thank you very much.